As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here's tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned, the Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
Call this meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to order. Good evening. Mr. Stevens, if you'll please call the roll.
Yes ma'am. Ms. Knoll?
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Palatin District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is Vice Chair of the Board. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is Chair of the Board, sitting to by far left Adam Kinsman, County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk for the Board.
Thank you so much. I am going to turn it over now to Supervisor Eisenhower, who will introduce our pledge leader.
Hey, this evening we have Jermaine DeValle, Devay, I believe, that's how it's pronounced, if I'm correct, you corrected me there, good. Young man is from Matoka Elementary School in the 4th grade, lives over in the Spring Hill subdivision, and he's here, his doctor, his parents, Dr. Kenya DeValle and Mr. Geron DeValle. His siblings, and I'm gonna have to work on this, Jeremiah, Gervell, Kaziah, and Gershon. And he is really active, he is active in soccer, singing, dancing, engineering, and cooking. He's into soccer and running club, and he's in run club and travel soccer, AB on a roll and performs with his siblings in a group called Angel Armies. So, he's in the Good News Club, Legacy Soccer Club, and Run Club at Matoka. And so after a moment of silence, if you'll come up and lead us in the pledge allegiance, and afterwards we'll, got some things for you, and we'll get a picture.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you all welcome out, let's get up.
I'm gonna do one real quick and I'll get you all. This is for me.
Listen, you might drop the mic.
Oh, thank you, sir. Someone knows what to do. It's on video, hold on a second. There we go.
Excellent. Oh, he's gotta get one out.
I gotta get the official.
One more, one more, one more.
Oh, no, I'm just...
Thank you so much for bringing your family out, and thank you, Mr. Knolls, for coming as well, we appreciate it. We have a presentation this evening, we have a retirement recognition. Mr. Stevens?
Yes ma'am, it's my pleasure to ask Ms. Arlena Fortinori to come forward along with Pauline Mulligan, and Mulligan, and we'll recognize Pauline for her years. Stand beside her and then we'll move you around in just a minute.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisor members, county staff, and the great residents of James City County. I am honored to be here to recognize the 22-year career of Ms. Pauline Mulligan. Pauline started with James City County in 2001 in WADA, the Williamsburg Area Transit Authority, and we were blessed to get her in 2006 in Parks and Recreation as our Budget Management Specialist, where she has stayed ever since. And our department has been forever changed for the better because of Pauline. What many may not know about Pauline is that she's a humble, yet collaborative leader. She believes in doing the right things well, and she believes in doing all things in excellence. I've had the pleasure of directly supervising her for the last three years, and when I began supervising her, I said, "So, Pauline, what do you expect out of our team, and what do you expect out of me?" And she says, "You know, I expect, you know, five things. I expect us to be a productive team, I expect us to work together to produce quality work, I expect us to respect one another, I respect us to care about each other's needs, and I expect us to be accountable for our actions." And after a few months of supervising her, I soon realized why she said that, and it was because that's who she was. And that's what she exemplified. She exemplified every one of the county values that we had, and she far exceeded my expectations. And so we're forever thankful for her. While she's been with us, some of her key contributions is that she has shaped policies and procedures, financial best practices, and she has led the financial section of national accreditation. And what's most important to me is that she led a very caring and competent team of people to do a great job every day. And when I think about a quote, one quote I think about when I think about Pauline is that we often say, "We want to leave things better than the way we found it," and that's exactly what she did. She left the county better, she left our department better, and she left me better as a leader, as a supervisor. So we are forever thankful for all that she has done and contributed. And as she goes into retirement land, just know that you always have your Parks and Recreation family, and you can always come back home.
Would you like to say a few words?
I'll keep it short. James City County has welcomed me for the last 20, well, since I became a temporary employee in September of 2000, and then working for Richard Drumright for five and a half years, and then for John Conifax for almost 18 years. I do wanna say that James City County is the best place to live and the best place to work. So, it is truly a small community, and it, I never would have guessed that I would have applied here and stayed here for as long as I have, but I'm one of those people that I can count almost on one hand how many jobs I've had in my whole life. So, once I start a job, I'm pretty dedicated, so.
Well, thank you very much for your service. I think having words like that said by someone says so much about your character, and I thank you so much for all that you've done for James City County. I think that's gonna be a very hard position to fill, certainly with all the things that we've heard about you today. But we'd like to get a picture if we could, so if you could come up. But thank you so much for everything. Now, when I got something from Teresa last week that asked if I could do a proclamation, I said, "Our agenda is just way too full," but then she told me it was for Peg Borman, and I was not willing to get in trouble. So, and it was an important one. So Peg, you'll come stand up here with me? Yes, absolutely. Well, that works out. Proclamation, Ruetan Awareness Month, May 2024. Whereas Ruetan National is one of America's largest community service organizations dedicated to creating a better world for current and future generations through fellowship, goodwill, and community service; and whereas the Ruetarian mission is to enrich communities across America through the efforts of local Ruetan clubs that embrace the motto of fellowship, goodwill, and community service; and whereas Ruetan National was founded in 1928 in Holland, Virginia, and has been headquartered in Dublin, Virginia since 1942, celebrating over 90 years of community service; and whereas the James City County Ruetan Club was founded in 1939, and its members organized fundraisers to support local charities, youth organizations, local emergency service organizations, and community needs; and whereas the James City County Ruetans conduct anti-litter campaigns, community cleanup drives, and other environmental projects to improve our community; and whereas the James City Ruetans provide scholarships and educational assistance to deserving students pursuing higher education. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Chair of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, hereby proclaim May 2024 as Ruetan Awareness Month in James City County, and I encourage all residents to recognize the valuable contributions the James City Ruetans make to enhance the quality of life in our community, and witness whereof I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the County of James City, Virginia, to be affixed this 14th day of May 2024. Congratulations, and thank you for everything you do. You can get Jason to take the picture, yeah, well that way you're weekly, all free DNA. How's that? Thank you for all y'all do. Thank you, Jason. Okay, with that, we have Dream Home Designs, Carrie Daniels.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Daniels, and I'm a housing specialist with the James City County Housing Office, and I'm pleased to share with you all this evening that students from the WJCC school system participated in a project over spring break. They were asked to create their version of their dream home using supplies provided to them by the housing office. The purpose of this project was to raise awareness of and promote fair housing in the month of April. Community partners, constituents, and local landlords attended the Upper Peninsula Rental Fair on April 9th at the JCC Rec Center and casted their vote for the categories that they felt each dream home best matched. Tonight, we're proud to present to you all and the Board of Supervisors, some of the students and their dream homes. Mrs. Larson, we thank you so much that the Board has taken time out of their busy schedule to acknowledge these students.
Absolutely, thank you. So, you wanna tell us their names?
Um, we have...
Oh, I have them right here. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you, great job. All right, that brings us to public comment. Our first speaker tonight is Peg Borman. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good afternoon, Ms. Larson, members of the Board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Ms. Ryan Homer, and Ms. Kinsman, ladies and gentlemen, and boys and girls. I'm Peg Borman, I reside at 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot, and I've come before you tonight to talk some trash. You know, I like to do that. As you might remember, we had the Great American Cleanup at the end of March, and at that time, I want, I'm happy to know that we collected 1,155 pounds of trash and five tires. We had 33 volunteers with 76 hours of time. And the end of April, we had our 46th Annual Spring Litter Cleanup. And I have to say, I've been in all 46 of those. From that, we had, we collected 17 tires, 2.02 of litter and trash and debris, debris and whatever else was on the roads out there. We had 105 people that registered for that, but all the volunteers haven't reported their hours, so I don't, I've only gotten 92 hours that have come in at this time. So I hope they, rest of them, maybe they're listening and they'll send those reports in. This was the second year that we have had the fellows from Jolly Pond Convenience Center that picked up the bags and all the stuff that was, I left out for them. And instead, you know, instead of going to the, everybody taking all out to the convenience center and so forth, this really has worked out much, much better, in my opinion, because, and I don't have to be out there watching it come in, but, and then, but it's also cut down on all the household trash that was coming from the attics and the garages and so forth. And we were paying for that disposal, which, that has really been a good thing to have, clean that mess up. But the roads are getting cleaned, and like I said, and off the attics and the garages. And I'm hoping at this time, we'll have even more volunteers and groups and organizations that will get involved, knowing that they don't have to take it out in their cars or their trucks or whatever. take it out in their cars or their trucks or whatever. So, but on June 1st, we're going to be doing Clean the Bay Day. We will be concentrating on Jamestown Road, basically, and the James River watershed. There's still time for folks to get involved with that, with this collection, by calling the office at 757-259-5375, or go on the county website and check out the Clean the Bay and the Clean County site. And I want to make sure that all of you members of the Board are aware of our upcoming Will Barnes Day. You know, Will Barnes Day is on his birthday, the 14th of June, and it's going to be at, this one's going to be on June 15th, because we try to have it on the Saturday closest to his birthday. And it will be at 4 o'clock at the Will Barnes Shelter in Veterans Park. And so, everybody's invited that that's, that worked on the cleanups this, this spring. And we want to invite those volunteers because we appreciate them, and we're having a picnic for that litter collections. And the trash, trash is going to continue to be a problem, but we can't let it get, get, get out of hand. If everybody would do it a little bit, pick it up, be careful about letting it blow out of the car, the back of the trucks, or whatever, we can keep it under control. Have a great day, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Stephen Maines.
Good evening. I, I'm here to urge that we speak plain English and we follow the law. I've used loose terminology when saying that my property tax is going up 21%, when it's the tax bill that's going up and not the tax rate. But the same people are saying that cutting taxes and cutting the budget when candidly they're doing neither. I propose we use the language that's in Virginia law. It states that when assessments go up by more than 1%, our mill rate should be set to bring in no more than 101% of the previous year's revenue, unless you vote to increase it. And the same Virginia law calls that increase from that level an effective tax increase. So I'm going to use that terminology. So how much is the effective tax increase going to be? The mill rate equal to 101% of the 2023 revenue was roughly 69 cents. I've heard different proposals, raise the rate by eight cents to 77 cents, an effective tax rate of 12 and 1/4%, or raise it all the way up to 83 cents, which is a 21% tax, effective tax increase. That's the question we need to be addressing. When we talk about where you can make cuts in the budget to pay for so-called tax cuts, you're not cutting the budget. The budget hasn't been adopted. You're simply not increasing the budget by as much as earlier proposed. Please be clear if you desire to raise the budget by some amount, and explain what, what the return will be on that increased expenditure. We can be cavalier about how little a 21% increase affects the owner of a $600,000 home, but it's not the typical home in James City County. 50% or under 400K. That 50% are the hardest hit, and it does not matter if you own a home, because if you pay rent, you pay property tax. An effective tax rate goes up, so does the rent. And what is a family of four living on the median, JCC income of $99,000, living in their $300,000 house? What do they get for almost $500 more they pay in property tax? What, where are they supposed to get that $500 in rising, with the rising cost of homeownership, utilities, insurance, maintenance, taxes, not to mention in light of food prices that have exploded, and gas that remains stuck at 350 a gallon, above the, the 2021 level? And, and where does the widow on a fixed income, with a $200,000 house 10 years ago, which is now a $270,000 house, find the money for the increased taxes? Inflation has ravaged her income. We enact special taxes to bring tourism to the area and bring motels and restaurants who hire local workers, and then we compound their housing problem by taking, by giving with one hand and taking away with the other. Before I came to William &amp; Mary for grad school, I ran the budget for the Army's Tank and Armored Vehicle Systems. I understand how budget people hedge their bets by placing so-called wedges in future years' budgets, you know, just in case. But if those problems never arise, the money never comes back. Government finds new needs that they cannot live without. I understand concerns about the cost of splitting the school district, but our first impulse should not be to tax our way out of the problem. Having run a small business for almost 14 years employing hundreds of professionals, there are efficiencies to be gained from reorganization. There might even be creative ways to tap the excess school capacity in neighboring school districts until school inventory matches population. Until those have been fully explored, the government, the people will do much better with their money than the government ever could. There is pressure tonight to take a vote on it and put this messy affair behind us, but I believe that there is a real legal, that there are real legal hurdles to jump. You must vote to raise the, the tax rate to 83%, uh, excuse me, 83 cents. Bylaw, an announcement must be made of, of the effective tax rate increase, listing the lower tax rate and the effective tax increase which you intend. I do not believe that these have been done. I respectfully ask that you speak plain English, and you build your budget and follow the law. But I, more importantly, ask that you consider the fiscal pressures by your constituents and the 80% who do not live in $600,000 homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Franz? Good evening.
Good evening, Susan Franz, 103 Cardinal Court. I'm just going to tag on to Mr. Main's amazing comments. I totally agree with everything that he just said, and I just want to say that I think it's disingenuous for all this language stuff about rebates and that sort of thing, and it makes it sound good for the citizens, when really and truly, it, what you guys are discussing doing is a major tax increase. Just like you said, lots of people on fixed incomes can't handle this, and this economy is not going to get better. All signs show that it's going to continue to get worse for everybody, whether you're on a fixed income, whether you're out there pulling in a salary, the economy is just getting worse. And with everything on the global scale and the national scale, nobody's going to be able to handle this increase that you all are, are discussing. So I would strongly advise that you find another way. Just like Mr. Main said, the citizens can decide how to spend their money better than government can. I'm a small government person, and I ask you, I humbly ask you to consider not making this raise, that basically that's what it is, but it's being disguised under other language. Thank you.
Chris Henderson?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, County Administrator, County Attorney, Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. Couple of things this evening. I've got some comments about the budget, but I want to address a couple of other things first, and that is with respect to the timing of the Board of Supervisor meetings. Many years ago, we used to have our meetings later in the day when it was more convenient for working people to attend board meetings. And it was changed as a matter of convenience for staff. And I objected at the time that it was done, because I felt like it reduced the opportunity for participation by the citizens. And as public servants, which elected officials are, your duty is to serve your constituents. And by having the meetings at 5 o'clock, which causes disruptions for people with families and people with jobs, and those are people who we need to participate, it excludes them from the governing process. And I think we all are diminished by their lack of ability to participate. And I want to encourage this Board to look at the calendar, and let's come up with some dates where we can have meetings at later times. And the effectiveness of this has been seen and demonstrated over the years. When you host meetings in other venues at 7:00 PM and 6:00 PM, the rooms are packed, because people can make the meetings. Here, it is a lot more of a challenge. And I would tell you that it's worth the extra inconvenience in order to allow more people to participate. And as traffic continues to get worse, and we're going to talk about the six-year plan, I sat through four light cycles at Jamestown Road on 199, trying to get here, and what should be a 15-minute commute becomes a 25 or a 30-minute commute at 5:00 PM, when you're, when you're trying to make these. With respect to the budget, I agree with, with, with Mr. Main's and his comments about the, what is a slight, a budget sleight of hand with regard to a rebate. The reality is, is it's a tax increase, and it should be discussed as that. And it's convenient to describe spending above current levels as something other than a tax increase. But that's what your constituents, this constituent, views it as. You are spending more money than you, than you took in the prior year, and you're increasing the amount that you're, that you're taking from your taxpayers. And I would argue that now is not the time to be burdening taxpayers. Taxpayers are under lots of pressure. They have to pay the increased cost of food and transportation. They have to pay for insurance and all of the other increases in the cost of living that it takes. So, you know, I'm often criticized because I don't offer solutions. I just say, "Well, there's a problem. Go solve it." And I would tell you that a mechanism for savings would be to implement your salary adjustment scale over multiple years, and instead of one year, look at it over two or three years. You could save a lot of money, since $11 million is dedicated to increased spending to make us more competitive within the marketplace, as I understand the budget. So if you were to take that and spread that out over two or three years, well, then you have softened the blow for taxpayers. You also have capital improvement projects that could be deferred, and we could look at perhaps not spending as much money at the marina as we have been. The money that's spent at the marina serves a very limited constituency. There are 80 boaters that benefit from the improvements at the marina. Okay? That's not a countywide plan. We would be better off doing other things. And you've also got this big placeholder for a new government complex for $100 million, when potentially the economy could be going in a direction that nobody would like to see it go, where costs are going to be spiraling even more out of control, or we could be going into recession. So my advice to you is caution. Be conservative, and save taxpayers' money where you can. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of the following. Scenic Roadway Protection Overlay District. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Please for approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Stevens, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hipple?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. That brings us to public hearings. Our first public hearing this evening is SUP 2400017146, Little Creek Dam Road Rental of Rooms. Our PC rep this evening is Jack Haldeman. Welcome, Mr. Haldeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Ms. Anna Martinez and Mr. Kenneth Fletcher have applied for a special use permit to allow for the short-term rental of one-bedroom in a four-bedroom, single-family home at 7146 Little Creek Dam Road. The property is Zoned A1, General Agricultural Designated Rural Lands on the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map, and is located outside the primary service area. The property is served by private well-inseptic. If granted, this SUP would allow for short-term rentals throughout the year. No changes to the footprint of the home are proposed. Staff finds some favorable factors for this application, such as the presence of adequate off-street parking, and that the owner will live on-site. Staff finds the proposed use will not negatively impact level of service for roads and other public services. While staff believes the location is generally considered appropriate for this use, staff finds that the proposal is not fully consistent with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Plan Recommendations for Short-Term Rentals. Therefore, staff is unable to recommend approval of this application. Should the Board of Supervisors approve this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. At its April 3 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four to three. Also at the meeting, the commission suggested a condition restricting access to Little Creek Reservoir for any rental occupants. While the owners have agreed to advertise the no-access, the county does not typically impose conditions relating to trespassing on adjacent property. Little Creek Reservoir is privately owned, and as such, is subject to existing law that speaks to trespassing, and enforcement can be done irrespective of the SUP process. Therefore, staff did not add this as a condition. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Haldeman? I'm sorry. Are there questions for staff at this moment? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Haldeman?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. As you know, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this application by a vote of four to three. Ms. Costello covered the issue very well. I don't have a lot to add. The Commissioner has asked several questions for clarification about the Newport News buffer, as she mentioned, and there was some discussion about the shared ownership of the driveway. But otherwise, there weren't a lot of questions or discussions. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
What were the major concerns, Mr. Haldeman, that, that, excuse me, caused three members to vote against?
The, the, two of the, there weren't a lot expressed specifically. There was some concern expressed about the nature of the shared driveway and the minor subdivision, and the fact that it's one address for, I think, four lots, four parcels, two of which were already built. And, and that was, there were questions about that. I didn't hear a concern. One Planning Commissioner is, doesn't like short-term rentals, as a matter, of course. But there weren't a lot expressed, and there weren't a lot of expressions from the four who approved it. It was just a four to three vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Oh.
The only question that I would have, and I guess I'd, I'd ask it of staff, or maybe the applicant, and that question would be, since my understanding is the applicant is only planning to rent the one room, why is the SUP for three rooms?
The use is for rental of rooms use. You could rent up to three rooms. And since they're only asking for one room, we conditioned it to just be one room.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, and I have one speaker, Kenneth Fletcher. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm Kenneth Fletcher. I'm the applicant. I reside at 7146 Little Creek Dam Road. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your consideration of this permit. My wife, Anna, and I, my two young children live at the home here. We moved back in December. Anna would have liked to be here tonight, but we couldn't get a babysitter for our kids. We're in a new construction house in a rural area on four acres. We're surrounded by forest on all sides. We moved back in December. We feel very lucky to be in our new home. We plan to stay for many years. We believe James City County is a wonderful place to raise a family, and that's why we moved here and settled down. I included these drone images that were taken shortly after the house was built to give you an idea of the setting. You know, we are applying to occasionally rent out one guest bedroom in our home. As you can see, our home is hundreds of feet from the nearest neighbor. There is one home completed on the, in the subdivision. All homes have at least three, three and a half acres. Ours is on four. All of the other homes are also going to be at least several hundred feet away. We have spoken with our one neighbor who moved a few months before us. None of the other homes are completed yet. The one neighbor who is in residence there said he supported short-term rental. He didn't have any issues or concerns, given the distance between the properties and the fact that we have a good relationship. To give you an idea of just the, the room in question, you know, we built this house with this guest bedroom with my parents in mind. They live three hours away. They come and visit about one They come and visit about once a month. They like to stay for a few days. So we wanted an area that they'd be able to stay comfortably. It's got its own separate entrance next to the garage. As you can see, that's the circled area in the picture, right next to the driveway. You know, also, my wife's family lives out of town, so they occasionally stay there. We have friends that come from out of town. You know, I had some friends last weekend who came and stayed. So the main purpose when we built this is we like to host people, friends and family. However, we also hope to rent out the room occasionally. We like to meet new people. You know, we like to use Airbnb when we travel, so we'd like to give it a try and appreciate maybe earning some extra income from it as well. I'll also note, just in this presentation, these two windows up top are my home office. I work from home 95% of the time, and my desk is right next to this window here, so I can see people coming and going. One thing I like about that is if we do go ahead and rent it out, I can see people coming and going if we are having guests here at the house. Here, just a summary of giving you a better idea of what our plans are. Like I said, we have a family with two young children. We live here full-time. We're going to stay here in the long term. There will be somebody at home whenever guests are present. Like I said, I work from home. My wife is a stay-at-home mom, so there's almost always somebody in the house during the week. We will only rent this one bedroom to a maximum of two people. And I think this is an important point. You know, we're not looking to fill this up with maximum occupancy. I mean, I value our privacy as a family. You know, this is something we're looking to do a few days a month. It's going to be kind of a pilot for our family as well to see how it works out. My priority is always going to be the well-being, the comfort, and safety of my family, and then that's followed by good relationships with the community, with our neighbors. So if anything ever happens that would put any of that in jeopardy, obviously, we'd address any issues that came up. We'll be the first to be affected because we live on-site, and if we need to scale-back rentals, you know, change how we operate, or stop renting, we can do that. Like I said, we're not dependent on the income from the short-term rental. A little bit extra might be nice, but this is not something that we need to do to pay our mortgage, or that we're going to have to rent a certain number of days a month to make ends meet. So like I said, we're going to keep that priority to make sure that there are no issues for my family or for our neighbors or community. If approved, we plan to get a business license, update our certificate of occupancy, any other requirements from the county. Like I said, this is a new construction home, fully permitted and inspected by the county in 2023, so I don't anticipate any issues from that. So with that, I thank the board for your careful consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
The shared road, how does that get maintained?
There is a road maintenance agreement that we have between all the... There are five homes on the driveway. It was just built maybe a year ago, so we haven't had any maintenance done on it yet.
Right, and y'all share that equally?
Yes. I have to go back and look at the agreement to see how the payments work, but...
You know, living on gravel roads, sometimes it starts out wonderful, and then, even if they're family members, it goes haywire as time goes on. So I always wonder about, you know, shared driveways and who maintains it, how it's kept up, and do y'all have a homeowners association within the neighborhood?
Just the road maintenance agreement.
Just the road maintenance agreement.
And it's gravel now. There's quite a bit of construction, so there are trucks going up and down it all the time right now. But the plan is to have it paved. The builder has agreed to pave it after all construction is complete, so that should help with wear and tear.
And is it a single-wide or double-wide driveway or entrance?
Width of the driveway? I couldn't honestly tell you, you know, what the parameters are for single-wide or double-wide. I mean, we have trucks going up and down, and you can kind of get around it, but it's not extremely wide. It's not as wide as a two-lane road.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Much. I don't think there's a further question.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. So I will close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to see if we can maybe defer final consideration of this till after the 1st of July.
Okay.
If the board's willing, we could set it for our calendar for July 9th meeting. It'd allow us to take a look at some of the things that have come out of the General Assembly before we make a final decision on this.
Okay. Got a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. I will look to the board... Mr. Stevens, did you get that motion, defer to the July 9th meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And could a member of the staff, would you mind, Terry, talking to the applicant? Okay. Thank you. If you'll make the vote, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to SUP 230030-100 Norwich Lane, St. Olaf Catholic Church Campus Expansion. Tess Lynch.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mr. Jason Grimes has submitted a request to amend a special use permit, SUP 0007-2015, to allow for an additional 25,000-square-foot expansion to the existing St. Olaf Church Campus, including but not limited to space for outreach ministry programs, administration space, counseling areas, religious education space, multipurpose space, and an expanded parish hall, as well as additional parking areas. The subject property is located at 104 Norwich Lane, Zoned R8 Rural Residential and A1 General Agriculture, classified as low-density residential on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and is located inside the primary service area. This SUP shall replace and supersede SUP 0007-2015 and its conditions. However, several proposed conditions have been carried forward, including lighting, which states that any new lighting shall meet the previous lighting condition to match current fixtures and pole height. Staff finds that this proposal is compatible with surrounding zoning and development and is generally consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. Staff also finds that the proposed conditions will mitigate impacts to surrounding properties and development. At its April 3 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this application by a vote of seven to zero. Prior to this meeting, it was brought to staff's attention by the applicant that a note on the master plan and a related SUP condition stated that any future development shall remove or relocate the existing playground from its current location. However, the applicant stated it may, in fact, not be removed. The applicant proposed changing the playground removal/relocation note and condition from shall to may. Staff and the commission were agreeable to this change and noted it in the motion for approval. The master plan and condition were updated to reflect this change. Further, the wording of condition number five was changed for clarity. The condition was not substantively changed. Should the Board of Supervisors recommend approval of this application, staff has included proposed conditions for consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Lynch? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Haldeman?
Again, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval of this application. There was one written letter of concern about the direction of stormwater flow, and that the author of that letter came to the meeting, spoke of his concerns, but my sense is that he was mollified by the discussion and by the engineer's description of a backup plan for another BMP if necessary. There were several questions asked about clarifying building locations and demolitions and the flow of the stormwater, but there were no real concerns expressed by the commissioners.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Haldeman?
Mr. Haldeman, from your understanding of it, it didn't sound like the proposed changes or new building structures that might be going in there would significantly alter the existing flow of stormwater off the property. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. The engineer seemed to indicate that, but if it did, the DEQ and the county could require changes to be made, either with regard to the part of the flow, stormwater flows toward Richmond Road, which is in the Armith watershed, but the majority of it flows north into the Skimino watershed. And if there's a substantial increase in stormwater flow, there will be an increase in impervious surface, but if it results in a substantial increase in stormwater flow, they'll have to make adjustments.
The second question I had was, apparently, a lot of this flow goes underneath the railroad tracks, and there was some indication that that is a small culvert that was fairly clogged.
It's a 12-inch pipe.
Was there any discussion or thought about what might be done to try to help mitigate that? Or is that... I know it's outside of the boundary of this thing, but it does take that flow essentially from across the other side, doesn't it?
It does. And no, to answer your question, no, there was no discussion about increasing that. It's a 12-inch pipe.
It's hard to get CSX to clean it.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I will open the public hearing. I have one speaker card, Graham Corson. Good evening.
Evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Graham Corson. I'm an engineer and project manager with AES. I'm standing in for Jason Grimes tonight, who was unable to attend, and I'm pleased to be representing St. Olaf Catholic Church. I would like the board members to know that several members of the Church Building Committee are here tonight and, together with myself, are available to answer any questions you might have. Work on this request before you began two years ago, when the Church met with planning and stormwater staff to discuss the Church's objectives and the process for achieving them. We have worked closely with staff since that time and are very pleased with the staff report summary conclusions and the staff recommendation for approval. Given the favorable report and recommendation, that concludes our introductory remarks, but we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. I will close the public hearing. I will look to the board...
If I might just add, I want to add a question for Mr. Eisenhour.
Certainly. State your name and address.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Rinaldi, 4029 Ironbound Road. Just wanted to let Mr. Eisenhour know that we became aware of that obstruction under the railroad before we heard from the neighboring property owner, and our men's group made a project of it one weekend before the Planning Commission. So the obstruction was a rock that had been stuck in the pipe. That's been removed. The drainage way's been cleared, cleaned, and everything's flowing beautifully now.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And just one last, I want to thank the staff. There was, you know, a lot of ups and downs in the application early on, and they were very patient and collaborative, and we're very grateful for that. We think we ended up at a great place, and we want to thank everybody for that.
Thank you. You've addressed my concerns.
All right. I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to MP 24-0001-Z240004, Ford's Colony Master Plan and Proffer Amendment. Roberta, have I gone back in time? What's going on?
I'm back.
All right. Well, that is good news. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
For when I said, wait a minute, so I'm glad you're back.
It's very nice to be here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Susan Tarly of Tarly Robinson, PLC, has applied on behalf of the Ford's Colony Homeowners Association to amend the adopted Ford's Colony Master Plan and Proffers. This amendment is in reference to the use of 6.76 acres of land located at 125 Firestone. The subject property is located inside the primary service area, Zoned R4 Residential Planned Community, and is designated low-density residential on the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The proffers for the Ford's Colony development have been amended many times since the subdivision's inception in the mid-1980s. Most recently, this body has reviewed amendment requests pertaining to the Ford's Village Continuing Care Retirement Community, and prior to that, for a general cleanup and revisiting of outstanding proffers, many of which were deemed satisfied or no longer applicable as the community is very near build-out after almost 40 years of growth. Similarly, this current proposal deals with a proffer from one of the earliest of such amendments. The current request would change the master plan designation of 6.76 acres from a public service area for dedication to the county to a similar non-residential service use designation serving the HOA instead. The 6.76 acres was proffered for dedication in 1987. Given factors such as changing RPA delineations, community build-out, and the selection of other public service sites around the county, and also based on feedback received from other reviewing agencies, staff finds the proposed designation more appropriate in scale and applicability to the site. At its April 3, 2024, meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors. Staff finds the proposal compatible with surrounding zoning and development and generally consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance, and recommends that the board adopt the amended proffers and master plan. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I believe a representative from the Ford's Colony HOA is also in attendance and willing to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Haldeman?
Again, the Planning Commission recommends unanimously that the board approve this application. The questions about the county's future use of this property were, one, I wouldn't call it an area of concern, but there were questions from the commissioners. The delineation of the property within that yellow area that you saw on the map, there were no speakers other than the applicant and no written objections, and, as I said, we unanimously recommend approval.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Haldeman? All right. Thanks very much. Appreciate that. I will open the public hearing. I have two cards. One is Susan Tarly. If there's any, she's available for questions. Are there any questions for Ms. Tarly at this time? Tell you what, because we have a speaker to the hearing, if there's a question after, we'll come back to Ms. Tarly. Chris Henderson?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. I am a resident of Ford's Colony and support the application. I guess my only question was, was there a proffer in the original master plan that addressed access to News Road? Whether or not, it originally was proposed for a fire station, so I'm assuming that there was direct access for News Road. And if the property is going to be reincorporated back into the master plan, will there be access from News Road, or will it be internal to Ford's Colony? And that was really my only question.
Thank you. That would probably be something that we would have to get back to Mr. Henderson on. Okay. Thank you. And after that, are there any questions for Ms. Tarly? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll move approval of the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to Propose Fiscal Year 2025 Through 2030 Secondary Six-Year Plan. Good afternoon, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Each year, the Virginia Department of Transportation works with James City County Board of Supervisors to develop a list of priority projects for this updated secondary six-year plan. Through the secondary six-year plan, the county receives yearly state and federal allocations to fund proposed secondary improvements. Staff recommends the following priorities for FY 2025 through 2030 Secondary Six-Year Plan. First priority is Croker Road. This project will widen the section from Richmond Road to the James City County Library from two lanes to four lanes. Staff recommends keeping this project as a first priority on the SSYP to ensure that the project remains fully funded as the construction progresses. Staff recommends this second and third priorities to be the two intersection improvements. VDOT placed temporary bollards at the intersections of Old Stage Road and Route 30 and Centerville Road and Route 5. By including these two projects as a priority, VDOT is able to keep these two intersections funded. Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution, which endorses... Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution, which endorses the secondary road priority list as set forth in this memo, for the FY 2025-2030 secondary six-year plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you all have this time, and VDOT's here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions at this time? No, I do appreciate the, well, I appreciate all of this, of course, but most especially Centerville Road and Route 5. Those temporary bollards, people don't seem to understand that a street sign, when it says no turn, they turn anyway. So as soon as we can get that fixed, the better. So, thank you. With that, I will, it says that, that Jack was going to give a PC, but I don't think that's correct. Okay. Sorry about that. I will open the public hearing. Do we have speakers? Chris Henderson.
My lucky night. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. Again, to build on the comments that I made during the initial public comment section is to alert you to a problem that you're probably well aware of, and that, that is the five-alarm blaze that is occurring at Jamestown Road and 199. If there is a traffic problem in our community, and I realize it's technically in the city of Williamsburg, but it impacts James City County residents to a maximum extent. So I would suggest that we do whatever we can to cooperate with the city and with VDOT in addressing that specific issue. Because there will be a point in time where that intersection becomes impassable. It's probably operating at a level E or below, which means it's failing during the peak hours. And so it's something that would dramatically improve the quality of life of your fellow citizens. So I, I would hope that we would make that a priority in our discussions with, with VDOT and when it comes to the allocations of funds. And even if we have to contribute money to the project, it benefits James City County residents perhaps even more than city residents. And I, I realize that's going to be a long-term project, but the, the long-term vision of that was that the Route 5 interchange was to be above grade and a four-leaf clover intersection. So there's opportunities there to redirect traffic, and Ron Nervett will end up being vindicated in his vision of a tunnel underneath Jamestown Road or Jamestown Road as a tunnel underneath 199, because something needs to be done in order to address that just terrible traffic situation that, that impacts us. I do want to provide a compliment to, to VDOT for the work that was done on Long Hill Road. I was not a believer in the roundabout. I was the one who said that this is where tourists and residents were going to crash. And fortunately, I have not seen a lot of, of accidents at that, and it seems to be working very effectively and has done a great job at alleviating traffic that queues back up into and through the 199 interchange. So huzzah to VDOT and the crew that built it. With regard to recent improvements on 60, that would be another area where I think those are good and worthwhile, but it looks like we spent a lot of money on landscaping, and if we're looking to save money on road maintenance, that might not have been the best investment to put a bunch of bushes out there that are going to require mulch and pruning and water. So anyway, we need to think about the ongoing operational cost when we talk about roads. Thank you.
Thank you. That, I will close the public hearing. Perhaps, Mr. Stevens, at a future meeting, you can tell us. I know we had had public hearings. We had a pretty robust discussion going on with VDOT in regards to Jamestown Road, 199, and maybe we can get an update on where we are with that, because I know it's going to take cooperation between us, the city of Williamsburg, our citizenry, and VDOT. So if you could bring an update to us, that'd be great.
We will do that.
All right. I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to agreement to purchase property at 5255 Long Hill Road. Andrew Dean to give the staff presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board. Andy Dean with the County Attorney's Office. I'm just here before you on a few housekeeping items tonight, so I'll endeavor to keep it brief. But of course, if you have questions, happy to answer them or haul up a colleague who might have more to say than I. So this first matter is 5255 Long Hill Road. So the James City Service Authority owns a 1.29 six-acre circular water tank lot. This is in the center of 5231 Long Hill Road, the site of the new government building. The water tank lot's surplus property and JCSA is willing to sell it to the county as is for its assessed value. So attached is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to purchase the water tank lot, and staff recommends adoption of the resolution. And there's a photo in front of you that shows that sort of carve-out water tank lot there in the center.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Are there any cards this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Close the public hearing, look to the board for a motion and/or discussion.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Conveyance of easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company. Mr. Dean?
Good evening again, board. This is the second item. So this is Virginia Electric and Power Company Dominion. They have asked the county convey any easement to it for the bearing of power lines across property owned by the county located at Chickahominy Riverfront Park. That's 1350 John Tyler Highway. This is part of the Dominion Strategic Underground Program aimed at increasing resiliency of the grid by burying the lines. I've attached a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the documents necessary to grant the easement, and staff recommends approval of the resolution pending your question. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I'll look to the board for a motion and/or discussion.
Motion for approval.
Oh, public hearing, sorry. Open the public hearing. Any questions? Any speakers? Okay. Close the public hearing. Sorry, there's a lot of public hearings this evening. I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance to amend Section 20-27 dot 1 of the James City County Code to permit the Board of Supervisors to refund surplus real estate tax revenue. Mr. Kinsman to give the staff presentation. Good evening, Mr. Kinsman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Virginia Code allows local governments to refund surplus real estate tax revenue back to the taxpayers in certain situations. Should the board wish to have the option of refunding surplus real estate tax revenue in the current or any future year, I recommend that you adopt the attached ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Mr. Kinsman?
No.
All right. Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Do we have any? Chris Henderson?
All righty. Good evening, Madam Chair. Chris Henderson, 101 Keystone. By virtue of the precise language of the proposed ordinance, this is a refund of dollars that have already been collected, not dollars that are to be collected. Is that, is that a true statement? Is there anybody who can?
We don't answer questions during public hearing.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I pose that as a, as a question because it implies that those funds have already been collected and then will be dispersed, and I just want to make sure that that's precisely what the intention is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further cards? Close the public hearing, look to the board for a discussion or a motion.
And just to, to respond to, to the question.
Sure.
My understanding is that this allows us to take funds from our unassigned reserve balance and apply them as a credit to the upcoming property tax bill. So it is money that has already been collected and that the board would consider available for that purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Kinsman, is that, is that correct? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Supervisor McGlinnan. I'll then, was there a motion made?
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Supervisor Hippel? Mr. Stevens, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
All right. That brings us to board considerations. FY 2025, FY 2026 budget adoption and resolution of appropriation. Ms. McCarthy to give the staff presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. And your packet this evening is a resolution to adopt and appropriate the fiscal year 2025 budget. The adopted budget reflects the changes made from the county administrator's proposed budget. For the operating budget, those changes resulted in an increase in the general fund budget of approximately $900,000, which resulted from fee increases in the curbside recycling program and in certain parks and recreation programs. It also includes a reduction in the real estate tax revenue of $6.5 million and a use of fund balance in the same amount to provide a 5-cent tax rate credit to taxpayers. On the capital side of the budget, the adopted budget reflects a $6.5 million decrease. School projects were reduced by 3.1 million and county projects were reduced by 3.4 million. Those reductions were made in order to free up fund balance, which in turn will be used to return a tax, a real estate tax credit to the taxpayers. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. Are there questions for Ms. McCarthy at this point? All right. Thanks very much. I will look to the board for discussion.
Can I just ask a couple of questions of Mr. Kinsman, since I know he's knows so much about the advertising requirements and so forth in, in this regard?
Sir?
I just would like to, to clarify an aspect of what is required that we do in terms of instances where we are generating revenue above the revenue that had been collected previously. As I understand it, that while it may have implications for taxes collected, it really has to do more with revenue collected? That if our revenue exceeds a certain, a small percentage?
So there's a, there's a provision in the Virginia Code that says if the, the, via a reassessment, you have a tax levy that is equal to more than 101% of the previous tax levy, that you have to advertise that as a effective real estate tax increase. Those are, end up being display ads, which we did put in the newspaper.
So those ads were, were put in the newspaper indicating what the, what the rate would be if you were collecting the same amount of revenue from real estate taxes as you had prior to the reassessment?
That's correct. The Virginia Code is, is very specific about what you have to advertise, and you have to call it an effective tax increase. You have to, to display those same numbers that you stated.
And so it indicated that in the publication that it was an effective tax increase.
It did. Yes, sir.
Yes, right. And, and we, and then I know we distributed to the citizens, property owners, information about what their taxes are currently under the, under this rate prior to the reassessment being applied and to what the tax would be at the same rate as it had been. Is that correct? Ms. Smith?
That is. That, that's not part that's required in that particular code section, but I do believe that was done.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Further discussion?
Yeah. The only thing I would, I would say is I can, would come back to a couple of issues I want to raise is things that have concerned me a little bit about the budget. The, as you know, we, we had our meeting last week, and I was sort of in favor of doing a reduction of the tax rate plus a nominal thing, but we wound up not wanting to reduce the tax rate on the majority of the board. But we did come up with a, a tax credit, which I think essentially takes that from 83 for this one year down to about 78. That's still about 10 cents above, above the existing, which would call the zero increase When we looked at this, we looked at all of the things that we had thought we needed to do for the county. I think some of this has, there are two aspects to it. One is we're coming out of, we're coming out of COVID. We had really cut back quite a bit, and there were a lot of things that we maybe should have been doing that we weren't doing, and we're trying to get, if you will, a little bit caught up. One of the most important things, I think, is dealing with our, our manpower issue, the fact that we hit not competitive with some of our areas, not just our only, selling our staff, but our school teachers. So that was a predominantly, a fairly heavy lift. I think it was about 10, 11 million dollars of, of that money was, was for that. When I looked at what we needed to do in order to keep this community, the quality community it is, I reached a point where I said, you know, you could cut a little bit, but when you start cutting a little bit more, you're going to be starting having, having to have an adverse impact on, on the quality of life and the ability of us to provide services to the, to the people of this county. I know it's an, I know it's an increase, and I think we all have to acknowledge that that is the increase. But we have made an, an effort to try to reduce the, some of the CIP as much as possible. I think that the biggest problem for us is going to be next year when we do the CIP. And I would ask my fellow board members that we start that process early with the board fully engaged, because a couple of things that may or may not transpire between now and then. One is we may or may not find out whether or not we're going to have a split or a separate school system. If we have a split school system, you're looking at another $100 million. It has to go into the CIP. We can't fit it all in. So the CIP is going to have to be looked at and scrubbed very carefully next year. Very carefully. And it, we may or may not know the answers by the time we get, get there, but that's, that's something I think we have to be concerned about. I'm concerned about the debt service because we've gotten up to our 10% projected twice in the next five years. I think that I'd really like to stay under that 10%. I think that's something we would, again, have to look at. I think our policy says 10% and maximum 12. So I don't like being too close up, up against that, that limit. And then the third thing is somewhere about two or three years out, the existing fund balance that is being used to support the, in, in the tourism fund, which is being used to support the sports facility, will be pretty much used up. And somewhere at that point, we're going to have to make a determination of what we do. And my urging of the board is let's pay for that with tourism money. We have a tourism fund. We have tourism money there. If we have to cut something else out of that tourism budget to pay for that sports facility, let's do that. The last thing I want to do is take general fund money and put it into the tourism to pay for that facility. So those are the, those are the concerns that I, I see coming forward. I would like to, I would love to give, give a, a lower, lower tax rate, but I, when I moved here, it was 42,000 people in this county. Now we're over 80,000. We're not a small rural county anymore. And if you take a look at the tax rates of the larger organizations, larger, larger cities, if you're going to provide the services to your citizens, it's going to cost more. I moved up here from Newport News. I was paying a buck 25 down there. That's a whole lot more than you are paying here. So it's just a matter of what kind of services we're willing to have for our, our citizens in the, in the county. But those are the things I wanted to, to raise as, as issues or concerns before we
I believe that Mr. Stevens, I know that you and he have spoken and he has spoken about trying to start the CIP process, I believe you said, in October?
Yeah, Ms. Larson, you and I had spoken about with the board in October, ahead of the, or as we're in the budget process, probably, I would make a recommendation, we start talking about parks and rec projects in particular, maybe your June, July timeframe, because there are some of those bigger pieces that when you talk about needs or wants, that are things that we can do or not do, but they do improve our quality of life. And so I believe they are important as well. But I think the board's discussion in our CIP is a significant issue coming up. And in the next six months, we'll have a lot of time with you if you're willing.
Okay. Yeah, and I, there is, I believe, I did hear from citizens that were concerned about some parks and rec things that had been pushed further. So I think that that would be good to be able to talk about that this summer. Were there other questions? I had one more question for Mr. Stevens, but.
Go ahead, I'll follow.
Okay, thank you. We had talked last week about the schools' request for the additional 500,000. And I believe that what I gathered from this board was there was wanting them to go back, to, to have the school board go back, scrub their budget if they couldn't find the additional money or what was, I know the state budget has passed. I don't know if that puts them in a different position, but have them come back to us once they had had an opportunity to do that. What is the best way to handle that moving forward?
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate the question. I think for this evening and where Ms. McCarthy and I were is to move forward with the budget you have, as the state budget is being finalized. Again, the superintendent and I have talked a number of times over the past week. We've not come to resolution on what that final amount would be for them to be able to reduce their cost of health insurance, or at least the increasing cost of health insurance for their employees and their dependents. As we work to finalize that number, we'd also, I expressed to her, if they could find reductions within their budget, that would probably help us maybe match some of those based on some of the board's discussion last week. And so I still think we have some work to do. And I'd just like to reserve the opportunity to speak with you as after they have their finalized numbers from the state. And they're still working through that with the state budget and trying to figure out what that really means for our school division to come back to you. And if we need to adjust or amend, we would do that at a later date. So those conversations are ongoing and I don't have final resolution for you this evening.
Okay. Because just, just as a note, we give a, we do not categorically fund a school budget. We give an amount and then they decide what best way to allocate those funds, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So yes, if you, that, if you would come back to us at some point, that would be great.
The, as I understand it from the county minister, the, the sports complex is going to be paid out of the tourism fund. It's not coming out of the general fund. I don't want people to think we're subsidizing that out of the general fund. That'd be the worst thing to come out of this meeting tonight. That is from the tourist fund, tourism fund, and that will continue to go out of that fund. That's not going to be correct.
Supervisor Hippel, the short answer where I sit is yes. Now, I will say that the supervisor Eisenhour's comment, we do have $3 million of fund balance in the tourism fund today. And we have 400,000 program for FY '25, 800,000 in '26, 800,000 in '27, and 800,000 in '28. So if we don't have increasing revenues in the tourism fund, we will have spent all of the tourism fund balance. The other, say, sort of discretionary part of that, our five-year CIP has included a million dollars a year of tourism fund for CIP projects that could have a tourism component. That is still programmed in our current five years. So again, as that goes forward in time, that would be a place that I would make a recommendation to. If the tourism funds don't continue to grow as they have and can support our commitment to the, to the sports facility, we might reduce our million dollars to CIP or the next five-year cycle might have removed it anyhow. So my intent and belief is that the tourism fund will support the sports complex for the foreseeable future and likely to the end of our commitment to it. But I do share that same desire that Supervisor Eisenhour shared of trying to make sure it is paid for by hotel motel tax monies, because that is what I have shared, that I believe the revenue source would be and not our general property taxes.
And I agree with that. I just didn't want somebody to think that we were gonna, you know, because it kind of sounded like if I was sitting out in the general public, I'd be like, oh, wait a minute, where is that money coming from? And there were some comments too about the, you know, from some of the residents about the new county complex. And I think what they need to understand is whether we stay here and put the money in this structure and the other ones around here, and though good money to bad, it's still going to cost the same thing. We had the reports that show it, who are better off to move into a new facility and put everybody as close as we can under one structure and have one stop shop for the citizens and stop throwing, we just, we just replaced the sewer system. We were, you know, out front in Build Neff and we were, we were sitting there and in fact, two of the buildings, we replaced two of them. And just recently had it all torn up and everything else. And we spent that money, didn't want to spend it, but we were cleaning it out every couple of months, then it got to be every month, then it got to be every week, and it was almost getting daily. So we pushed it off as long as we can, but we're having trouble with the buildings. And so the, the thing was, do we repair and add on to the existing stuff we have and cost more in the long run? Or do we go ahead and put it into a new building? So what we're doing is spending the money of the citizens in the best, most reasonable way we can. So it's not throwing into a new facility just to have a new facility. It's either put it in this and keep going like we're going and putting Band-Aids on some and adding on and having a dysfunctional building or put it into a new building and not have to worry about it from years from now. And the savings is, is greater than just that. Vehicles and everything else. And that's where I'm, and maintaining a bunch of buildings instead of one building and a new modern building. So I just wanted to let you know. And then the school issue is going to be what the school issue is when we get to it. We won't know that. And, and right now, we don't know what's going on over there in the, in the city. And, and, and sometimes I wonder if we'll ever know, but, you know, we have all our opinions on that. And, but we're going to keep pushing and do what we need to in James City County, whether the city comes with us or not. They can either come or they not, and we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just say that without giving away too much, that as you all know, we have been interviewing for a CEO candidate for Visit Williamsburg. And all candidates that we had as finalists all have sports complexes in there where they're coming from that are extremely successful, that kept them afloat during COVID, and they're still extremely successful. And so I have every reason to believe that ours will be as well, and we will increase that revenue. So with that, I will look.
Can I, can I just make a comment before we move on?
Oh, yes. And then Ms. Knoll.
Ms. Knoll, go ahead.
Ms. Knoll, go ahead. Sorry.
I was just going to say, I know it's been really tough discussing this budget, having our town halls, having people say that they can't afford to pay and all these problems that they have. And we understand that. And we have a high level of product that we put out here in the county. I mean, we have really, really good facilities. I've come from other counties that don't have half of the things we have. Our parks are phenomenal and so forth. I certainly understand with some of the comments that were made tonight, especially about the marina and so forth, that doesn't help a lot of people. You know, if people can't have a boat, not everybody has a boat. I've never had one. And I was trying to fight, you know, to get our rate lowered to 75. And I, you know, I tried to figure it out many, many ways. We worked through everything. Mr. Stevens has done a great job of cutting back on a lot of things, which I think is important. But we get down to wants and needs, and I think there are a lot of things we want and there are a lot of needs that we have to fill. Everybody's talking about keeping, keeping our employees, keeping our teachers and so forth. I don't fully agree that they should get raises every single year. That's just my personal opinion, because not everybody else gets them either. I would like to see a pay scale for everybody that works for the county be tied to cost of living and nothing else goes up with the cost of living every year. I agree with all of that. I will continue to fight to keep our taxes as low as possible. But I think under the circumstances, we've done pretty well this year and we just don't know what's in our future. So I am in favor of the five cents credit that everybody gets. You know, and it would come out in your tax bill in December when you get your tax bill. It would say what it was supposed to be, and then five, five cents off of that would come out. And I think we need to move on from here. If we're not going to lower the tax rate, it still comes down with your five cents. It comes down to 78 cents, which is not the worst in the world. A lot of counties have cut theirs. We want to call it a tax credit. That's fine. But it's the same thing as moving the tax rate down without having to move the tax rate down. So I'm okay with it. We just have to watch where we spend our money, really be careful. And what we spend it on for the greater good is for the most of us and not maybe specifically for little enclaves of people that have this or have that. It has to be for everybody. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is to, to thank our staff and the county administrator for putting together such a clear and compelling explanation for the, that justifies, I think, fully, the 83 cent tax rate that we have in place now. And I didn't hear after the presentations, very many people who said anything other than, I, I agree with you that this is what we need to be able to do, but I would like my taxes to be lower. Now, I think we recognize that assessments increased pretty dramatically over the course of the last two years with a very hot real estate market out there. And I think what we're doing with the credit that we're assigning is an effort to help people plan accordingly so that we can, in fact, reduce the impact of the assessment for the coming year and then be prepared if we need to, to move back to the full 83 cents the following year. We did not have a tax increase last year at all or a rate increase with no assessment change last year because assessments are done every two years. And I think it is important to, to recognize that I didn't hear many compelling arguments about specific cuts that could be made in, in terms of our budget. I'm, I, I think that the plan that is being put forward now is one that allows us to both address the needs that we have and to provide some buffering for the impact in the coming year without causing a serious problem and to send the wrong message to our credit rating agencies and those that we will rely on in the future to help our county provide the facilities we need at the best rate possible. So I think that this is a really good budget that demonstrates that we have been transparent, that we have clearly indicated what we are thinking about doing and what the implications of those choices are and that will allow us to take a very solid step into the future without having to be unduly concerned about the idea that we have handcuffed ourselves for the future. So thank you.
Further comments? I just want to also thank staff for all of your hard work. And that goes to everyone that starts on this budget process months ago. And thank you, Mr. Stevens. And I want to thank my colleagues and I want to thank all the citizens that came out to our community meetings to share their thoughts on the budget. And I want to thank those that engaged with us in a respectful manner. I will say that there were a few that I thought were really out of line in name-calling our staff and name-calling our, our county administrator. And, you know, it's, it's okay that if we disagree over something like the budget, I understand that. That impacts everyone's daily life, but we can do so in a civil manner. That's what it's about. If we can have respect and civility, I think that goes a long way. And I would have to say that we're 99.9% of the people that we encounter during our community meetings. But I would ask, because I think we have a staff that is responsive. I believe I have colleagues that are very responsive to emails, phone calls. We want to hear from people. We want to do what we want to, what we can do. And so I would just ask that we all keep that in mind moving forward. I do believe that we have a county administrator that leads a team that looks for efficiencies in our county government. I do not see wasteful spending here. It's why they take the time to really go through, make sure that, that what they're asking for is very much looked at. And that's why Mr. Stevens, when at our community meetings, does a very good job of saying what was asked for, what was not funded. There are so many things that happen in this community. We have neighborhoods that we, we have one developer, for instance, who developed several neighborhoods in this community where we have issue after issue sinkholes is just one of them, that we have to go back and people look to us to fix that. So those are things that aren't necessarily in a budget, but that the citizens want us to fix for safety. And we try to do everything that we can do to get those types of things done. We have to step in, as I said last week, we have to step in very often where VDOT's not able to do something, we are, we are put in the position of trying to do. There are just unexpected expenses that come up all the time. And I really appreciate the way that the county is willing to work and to try to find those. And I just want to say again, thank you for all the work that went into it and especially thank all of you as well. So with that.
Chair, I'll move the resolution, the budget resolution and the resolution of appropriation.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
All right. With that, have board request and directives?
Just wanted, I'm sorry, anybody?
Ms. Knoll?
Do you have any?
I don't think so.
Wait, John, I'll bring mine up.
All right. I wanted to first of all make note of the passing of county resident Carol Talbot passed away a couple of weeks ago at the age of 99. She was a real fixture in this community, had been extremely active for many years in a variety of organizations, especially the League of Women Voters. But she was also very active politically. She gave me what I thought was one of the best pieces of political advice that a 20-something year old could receive, which was, whenever you start to say something to somebody about politics, don't start with the word "I," start with "you." And I think that really reflects the very best sense.
You could have told me before the meeting. Go ahead.
Or before the last election, maybe. But Carol was, was just an incredibly energetic person. I realized that it was because she put 16 cups of, 16 spoonfuls of sugar in her coffee every morning and just kept on moving all day long to, to make this a better community. She lived in the city of Williamsburg for a long time, but she spent her last years, last 20 years or so in, in Williamsburg Landing and has just helped make this place much better. I know that her family will miss her. She was a member of the Board of Visitors at the College of William Mary for a while, an institution that she loved. And I just wanted to make note of, of her passing. And then I also wanted to mention just a couple of events that I attended or either by myself or with many others who were here. And I know others will perhaps have something to say about that. But I was fortunate with Peg Borman and others to engage in Arbor Day tree planting where we planted a beautiful native plant at the Williamsburg Botanical Gardens, Stewardia Virginia, which I think is called a silk, silky camellia. I think that's right. But a beautiful little plant that is native to the area, but extremely hard to find. In fact, Dr. Donna Ware, who found the plant, had to go to Maryland to track it down so that she could plant one in our botanical garden. It was a great event and I really appreciated it. It was part of a very busy weekend. After I went to that event, I went to the Old Town Medical and Dental Center, our great facility for our community with which the county is very closely involved, for Give Kids a Smile, their annual day in which dentists and dental hygienists volunteer their time to treat children who don't have the health insurance that would cover their dental care but are in desperate need of that, that kind of help. 142 kids were seen that day at Old Town Medical Center. I just want to salute them for the work that they did in providing that opportunity for all those young children to get free dental care and get themselves started on, on healthy dental hygiene. And then, of course, the next day with my colleagues, Ms. Knoll, Mr. Eisenhour, Ms. Larson, we went to Freedom Park for the celebration of the life of Colonel Lafayette Jones, Jr. And that was a truly inspiring event as well, where we recognized the work that he did to document the creation of the first, one of the first free black settlements in the country. country, right here in James City County at the site that is now Freedom Park. And I think the other, the only other event I would mention is that last, not this past Saturday, but the one before, went to the Williamsburg Regional Library's Friends of the Library meeting, reception, which was a great opportunity to learn of all the wonderful things that Friends of the Library have contributed to that just, again, make that a premier facility. The Library of the Year for Virginia is our own Williamsburg Regional Library and it may be very proud to see all the great things that they're doing, not just in terms of books and other things that people can check out, but programming, programming, programming of all kinds that just seem to touch every aspect of the community. So I'll leave it with that. I know there was another event, maybe somebody else is going to mention, which we went to on-
I'll just mention real quick, the only one I can think of that you left me off on was the Teacher of the Year event. And it was typically a wonderful event. It's always a pleasure to see the teachers and the enthusiasm that they bring to the classroom and to our children. So I was very pleased to be able to attend that, although parking lot's a little further away from the auditorium than it used to be and it's a little slower getting to it, but we still all got there.
Ms. Knoll?
I was just going to say we went to the Teacher, the Teacher Award of the Year, that was fantastic, really, really nice. It's nice to see that and it's nice that they do that because I think they need all the appreciation they can get from us. And of course, the memorial for Colonel Lafayette Jones, that was lovely. That was really, really nice. No? Great.
Yes, I've got a resolution. Do I need to read the whole thing out of more?
Okay. And it's just basically to get the, initiating the process to revoke the special use permit number 2-92 of the Colonial Golf Design, Inc. And this is basically just to get the process going and it'll be then take, staff will take it over, check everything out, give a report to the Planning Commission, it'll go through the Planning Commission public hearings and then it'll come to us if through public hearings and, and the board will vote on it as well as the Planning Commission. So it's just to get the, get it moving and get this moving in the right direction. I think everybody's got one at their dais and I guess, Adam, will, we need to do anything other than that to get that? Okay. All right, I motion for the resolution to initiate the process to revoke Special Use Permit Number 2-92 Colonial Golf Design, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, is that all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just, just a few things. One, start with that I attended, I think, the day you were at VACO, that your supervisor class, I was that night and the next day in Albemarle County for our spring meeting, which we always go to at the home of our president, which is Ann Malik this year. And we just had a wonderful tour of Albemarle County after a meeting on Friday evening into Saturday and appreciate very much their hospitality and it was just beautiful. And if there's one place that rivals, we're still the most beautiful, but they're right behind us because it's beautiful there. But it was interesting because, of course, we talked a lot about budgets and I know that you had said that you had shared that you had as well. And, you know, one thing that I will say is that everyone that I spoke with at VACO and it was, it's across the political spectrum, it's across the, it's across the Commonwealth as well, rural, southwest, you know, more urban, those that, there were several that had raised their rate, there were some that had cut, but were also very vocal about the fact that if they, that they cut knowing that they, they'd put off things they were going to have to address, they also knew that it meant that they were not going to be able to keep teachers, that they were losing teachers, they were not going to be able to keep them and that when it did come back to the fact that when they did get to the point where they were going to have to address these things, it was going to cost them more. So, you know, you gotta really think through, which I think that we have, we've got to really think through a budget because just to cut, it costs you in the long run if there's putting off things that you need. For instance, Montgomery County cut last year, they had to vote this year to raise it because they, they could not make it on what they had cut. So, went to all of those things mentioned and they were all very meaningful and really glad that I get to participate in things like that. Would just add that Mr. Stevens and I attended Mayors and Chairs in New Kent County and that was very interesting. We went to a, what was it called, Cooper's? Cooper's Brewery, Cooper's? We went at lunchtime, so there was no, you know, but it was very good lunch and-
They serve at lunch, I think.
They do. Well, we didn't do that, we didn't partake, but, but above us was this really interesting CPA firm called Pro Sports CPA, I think, and apparently they handle nothing but entertainers and pro sports clients in New Kent, Virginia. And they send their information there. I just thought that was fascinating. And we won't drop names, but there were some big names they were dropping. The other thing that we did along with several members of staff, including Chief Ash, we went down to Norfolk last week to go into the hurricane plane and, which is, by the way, 50 years old. That's, that takes a lot of trust, going up in a hurricane in a plane that's 50 years old. But it looked like it was in pretty good shape, but it was very, it was very interesting to do that. We also went on another plane that I believe goes up now, but then they will all be going to in 2030, right?
Air Force and NOAA, yes, ma'am. One was Air Force, Little Newer aircraft, and NOAA had the 50-year-old aircraft.
Right. And, but the, the main point of us going was for hurricane preparedness. And so the big, the big message is know your zone, have a plan, have three days worth of food and medication available to take with you, look into flood insurance even if you're not in a flood zone and just, you know, tide water area, we're very vulnerable. So we just need to make sure you know your zone and you're ready. So, and then the last thing I want to mention is last week I attended a memorial service for John Allwitz, who was a citizen of the city of Williamsburg but whom I served on the school board with. And he served on the school board as the city of Williamsburg representative and I think he also served on the zoning board for the city of Williamsburg. I just want to send my deepest condolences to his wife, Joyce, who is the chair of the Virginia Peninsula Community College Board. And John was, we were remembering, John was very serious, but then back in the, back in my day on the school board, we had a student disciplinary hearing usually every meeting, usually more than one. We had to split into committees, they do it much different now. And John, who was a very serious person, and then the student would leave and John would usually say something very witty to sort of break it up a little bit because you had just come from a very heavy discussion and he would kind of get you in a, you know, kind of a better spot. So, but I want to thank John for his service to our school board and he will be missed. So, and with that, I bring it to the report of the county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only item I'd like to share this evening is just sort of an update on, I guess, scam activity. We have residents who are being taken advantage of. The latest observation of our Police Department Assurers Department is more reports of individuals posing as law enforcement officers who are claiming that their federal, their federal or other warrants have been taken out against the individuals and if they don't make a payment right now, they will be arrested. And so victims are falling prey to that and I would just caution our community, if you get a call and something that doesn't sound right, please call the James City County Police Department, 253-1800. Again, our law enforcement personnel will not call and demand that you pay, make a payment then to avoid arrest. So if you get those kind of calls or anything similar with it, you think you're being taken advantage of, please don't hesitate to call our police department. Again, 253-1800. That's all I have.
Thank you. I just want to say one thing and then I have a request for the board to amend our calendar. Today I received a phone call from a citizen at, out in Governor's Land who had come upon an accident and had some questions, but one thing that came out of this is a bystander had stopped to help someone who had been in an accident and called using the Bluetooth of their phone and their car, the truck. And so the citizen was getting out to help the person who had been injured. Well, when you get out away from your Bluetooth, you, you don't necessarily disconnect the call, but it then goes to your phone. It just takes a little longer for the 911 operator. So if you call 911, try not to do so, you know, try to pull over, use your, use your phone so that they have a good connection with you so it's not going in and out from your Bluetooth because it just, or you have to stay with the Bluetooth and have someone else get out and check on the injured person. It will just help speed up the 911 service. I would ask that the county attorney recommends that the board amend their calendar to add the following dates since several members have indicated that they will be attending. One is the May 16th, 2024, 4:00 p.m., JCC Police Department Annual Award Ceremony. The second is May 26th, 2024, at 6:30 p.m., community meeting at Ford's Colony Swim and Tennis Club, which Supervisor Hippel, Supervisor Eisenhour and myself will be attending. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
No closed session this evening. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn until 4:00 p.m. on May 16th, 2024, for the JCC Police Department Annual Award Ceremony.
So moved.
Thank you.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye. Or adjourned.
You said 26, it's the 22nd.
Oh, I thought I said the 22nd.
We'll take it as a 22.
22nd.
Okay.
22nd.
Sorry.
Yeah. I, I thought about that. Ooh, wait a minute, let me check that.
I'd like to call the, to order the meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Call to order, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Presentations?
No, ma'am.
Any public comment tonight?
No public comment.
Consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of the following items and minutes. May I have a motion to approve or?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Public hearings. Mr. Powell, agreement to sell property at 5255 Long Hill Road.
Mr. Dean did such a good job explaining inside him at the Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to let him explain it here at the Board of Directors meeting as well. Andrew Dean with the County Attorney's Office. Good to see everyone again. This is 5255 Long Hill Road. That's that water tank property. As discussed earlier this evening, JCSA owns it. It's 1.296 acres. It's in the center of that lot that the county owns, 5231 Long Hill Road. And the county, this is the new building site and the county would like to purchase it as is for the assessed value. You should have an attached resolution authorizing the general manager of JCSA to sell the water tank lot and staff recommends adoption of the resolution. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for staff?
Move the adoption of the resolution, the agreement.
You have to, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Need to open the public hearing?
Facing through this.
Opening the public hearing?
Can you speak or call?
I'm just looking around the room.
Closing the public hearing.
Okay, now I got, now I'm moving. Resolution.
Mr. Powell?
Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Any board considerations tonight? Changes to the regulation governing utility service and resolution of appropriation for fiscal year 2025 budget?
Madam Chair, member of the, members of the board, there have been no changes to the proposed budget since the work session and public hearing last month. Staff recommends approval. There are two resolutions, but you can make one motion, but it's the resolution regarding changes to the regulations governing utility service and then the resolution of appropriation for the fiscal year 25 budget.
Any discussion?
Say you did an excellent job at the community meeting.
Yes.
Thank you for participating. Thank you for the, the good work that you and everyone at JCSA does and has helped keep your budget in good shape.
Thank you. I, I try to remember annually to thank Ms. Luton for all of her work on the budget. It is prime, obviously primarily the product of her work.
But the town halls were great. Your, your presentation was excellent. People didn't have any problem with that whatsoever.
I know.
Now that they're getting the bills so in the mail.
Not yet.
You're getting two bills like in two weeks and then you go, I know I paid that. Then you look and you didn't pay. So, but we're doing well.
Thank you.
Okay. So we need a motion.
I'll move both resolutions.
Thank you.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Any board requests and directives?
So you're going to hate me for this, but I do have a couple. I had a choice today, reading more exams or focusing on the dashboard and so. Looked at the dashboard a little bit and I just had a couple of quick questions that I hope they're, you know, and if you don't have the answers now, that's, that's fine. There seemed to be like a big jump in the tap fees collected this year. Is there a reason for that?
You know, tap fees are so chunky and we, as you may recall, we've overestimated them the last couple of years. And, and we may have been, we may have been overly aggressive this year in underestimating them. We really cut them pretty dramatically from the last two years because we didn't want to overestimate again. There has been a lot of building growth, particularly in the Stonehouse area. So I, I think a lot of that is from the Stonehouse area.
Thanks, that's, that's one. And I also saw a really big jump in calls for service.
I was actually going to say something about that during the general manager's update. That is a result of the new bills. You know, one, one week was 999, the previous record had been 600. So that is, and then I think the ensuing two weeks are in the 700. So the last three weeks, we have received a great number of phone calls and it's because of people with questions about their bills. And, you know, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the customer service staff who have fielded all of those calls over the last three weeks and done a great job, I think, of really being patient with customers and helping them to explain. You know, part of, part of, I hope that, I had always hoped that part of the outcome of going to a new bill would be that people would understand their bill better. And, and I feel a little bit vindicated at the number of questions that have been asked over the last few weeks by customers because I think it reflects that they really didn't understand their bill, you know? They've got questions about the new bill, but the questions they're asking really indicate they didn't really understand the old bill. And so, you know, I, I am hopeful that, I mean, this has been a lot of work for our customer service staff over the last few weeks. I am hopeful that the result of that is that people have a somewhat better understanding of their bill now. I, I hope.
I gotta tell you, I think the, when you look at the two, the two bills now you get from JCSA and from HRSD, it was rather eye-watering to notice that what was one nominal bill is about a 50-50 split.
Mm-hmm.
That you're paying as much, if not more-
Right.
-to HRSD for the disposal of it than we are for the supply of the water and taking the sewer away. So if anything, it sort of reinforced to me that JCSA has a pretty good deal for most of the folks. Now, I don't know whether I can say the same about HRSD, but you know, that's-
Yeah, remember when we, when we separated that and did that years ago, it was going to save us so much more money? I remember that meeting.
Only problem I had, only half problem I had was setting up my bill pay-
Yeah.
-to HRSD. There was no physical address to send your, wasn't, took me like an hour to figure it out. You have to go to, go back on the bills because it's not local. It goes to, I think, New York or Florida. But it took me, I'm sure a lot of your phone calls were for that.
Right.
People not knowing what to do. So that's, is that your update?
Yeah, the only, the only other thing is forgive me for surprising you with something, but the end of your meeting reminded me, we're having the JCSA picnic on June 6th. So I obviously want to invite you. So when you adjourn later in the meeting, if you, if you could, I guess, continue the meeting until June 6th, 11:00 a.m., this one is going to be at Freedom Park.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, right. I guess that's what you all did. So yeah, that would be- Okay, yeah, right, I guess that's what you all did, so yeah, that would be better. Okay.
Did what?
Amend the calendar.
Amend the calendar.
Oh, amend the calendar, okay. Do we have to do that?
Yep. So, should I, I'll motion to amend our meeting calendar to include June 6th, 11:00 AM, Freedom Park.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Okay, now we need to go, a motion to go into closed session for the following code sections. Do I have to read those?
Yep.
Okay.
Would you prefer that I read it, or?
Why don't you read it?
Okay, okay.
Mr. Powell to call the roll first.
Okay, so, two items to go into closed session. One, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members regarding probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating posture of the board of directors specifically related to Manor on the Green LLC's dispute of the amount of fees assessed by JCSA for water and sewer connection for the Manor on the Green apartments located in the Newtown development of Williamsburg, Virginia, adjacent to Sullivan Square pursuant to section 2.2, 3711 A7, and 2.2, 3711 A8 of the Code of Virginia.
So moved.
Do them separately, or what?
I concluded both of them there, so. But I do think we should probably do a roll call for closed sessions. So, Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
And closed session.[1015.23]